Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alvin Dunwoodie?
Here.
Alvin Ramcrapp?
Here.
Alvin Cooper?
Here.
Alvin Turner?
Here.
Alvin Bill?
Here.
Alvin Lewis?
Here.
Can I get a motion for approval of October 7th, 2025, meeting minutes, please?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda, please?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to special items, we have nine. Moving on to boards appointments and boards to the boards of commissions, we have none. Scheduled public comments, we have none. Just a reminder that all public comments need be entered to the city clerk by Wednesday before the meeting date. Public hearing, we have none. We'll go to introductions and first readings. Council bill number 2025-38, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of City of Ashland, Missouri, amending the annual budget for fiscal year May 1st, 2025.
My staff report is in your packet. I just want to point out, the reason we're doing this again, number one, is because of a resolution coming up with Chief that he'll explain later. And number two, we received our sewer funds, received reimbursement for our sewer fund. But we had to make some adjustments once the funds were received.
Any questions for staff? Can I get a motion to approve Council Bill number 2025-38, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of City of Ashland, Missouri, amending the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2025?
So moved.
You have a second? Alvin Dunwoodie?
Aye.
Alvin Ramcrapp?
Aye.
Alvin Cooper?
Aye.
Alvin Turner?
Aye.
Alvin Bill?
Aye.
Alvin Lewis?
Aye.
Moving on to old business, old business, ordinance number 1534, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Missouri, amending the code regarding replacement or placement of chicken coops near dwellings. Staff report, please.
We talked about this at length, the last meeting. Requested that you send over any other comments that you might have for consideration. So the highlighted line is just the line that I edited, just to kind of call that out. Rick had passed on, potentially thrown in 10 feet away from the property boundary as another condition, just to make sure it's not up against the fence. And that was the complaint that was raised during the public comment at the last meeting, as well as just trying to get a little more setback from the actual property boundary. Feel free to review that little change there, and if we have any other potential changes, now is the time to have some further board discussion. If you've received any other comments from constituents, please let us know so we can make further edits as necessary. Has anyone receiving any comments or anything about it?
No.
Any questions for staff? That part looks good.
Can I get a motion to approve ordinance number 1534, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Missouri, amending the city code regarding placement of chicken coops near dwellings?
So moved. Second.
Alvin Lewis?
Aye.
Alvin Bill?
Aye.
Alvin Turner?
No.
Alvin Cooper?
Aye.
Alvin Ramcrapp?
Aye.
And Alvin Dunwoodie?
Aye.
Motion passed. Ordinance number 1535, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of City of Ashland, Missouri, amending the annual budget for fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2025. Second read.
Yes.
Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve ordinance number 1535, an ordinance for the Board of Aldermen of City of Ashland, Missouri, amending the annual budget for fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2025?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Alvin Dunwoodie?
Aye.
Alvin Ramcrapp?
Aye.
Alvin Cooper?
Aye.
Alvin Turner?
Aye.
And Bill?
Aye.
Alvin Lewis?
Aye.
Moving on to new business, resolution number 2025-53, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute a SFY 2026 Missouri Blue Shield Grant Program. Staff report, please.
Let me remember, a few months back, we applied for and we granted this Blue Shield status. Blue Shield Communities, the status of the program, Governor created as a part of that. They have grant funding available to cities who achieve that status. And one of the things that are eligible to be purchased into the grant is new mobile radios. Mobile radios are where they're going to cars, and they're expensive. And so, we're kind of, Jert Communications is in the process of changing countywide to a dual band system, and it would take people with no more than me to nerd out on it. But it'll work better when it's all done, working better. Right now, our radios are very, very lacking in buildings, and this will be a better penetration into buildings, especially like school buildings, commercial buildings, things like that. All the radio people say it's a way better way to go. We don't have a choice because the county's doing it regardless. And so, we have been in the process of planning for that over several years. We've already purchased a few of these, but we need seven more. And turns out, we can get that with this grant funding. And we've been approved for that, and we just need recommending that the board accept that grant funding. And the coming months, we'll be purchasing those radios and be able to service for several years, we hope.
Good. Any questions for Chief? Can I get a motion to approve Resolution number 2025-53, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute SFY 2026 Missouri Blue Shield Grant Program? You have a second?
Second.
Alvin Lewis?
Aye.
Alvin Bill?
Aye.
Alvin Turner?
Aye.
Alvin Cooper?
Aye.
Alvin Ramcrapp?
Aye.
Alvin Dunwoodie?
Aye.
Moving on to reports. Just a couple of things. Chief, I don't know if you've seen on Facebook about a white Audi running through the neighborhoods.
Someone texted that to me. I do not know if anyone has reported that.
Okay, 311.
311, and again, it's a, it is just a struggle for the words to describe how helpful it would be for people to report things through 311 or 911. In addition to Facebook, preferably before they do.
Correct.
I don't care if it's on Facebook, but it really doesn't, it seriously hampers anything we can do about anything when we have to hear about it hours or days later on Facebook rather than promptly through 311 system. And it also cuts our partners out. Sheriff's deputies don't hear about it, Highway Patrol doesn't hear about it. But if it's through the dispatch system, everybody in the county hears about it. Plus, it's logged and added to history. So if this is an ongoing problem where everyone's able to research that, and it's not a day-to-day thing, someone who's working today is fresh to it, anybody that works could see the entire history of incidents like that. So, again, that was a symptom by a citizen. And again, I would just beg everyone to please call 311. And if in doubt, call 911. Nobody's getting in trouble for calling 911. We don't have a, you know, the only way to get in trouble, calling 911, is if you're, I mean, 30 times in 20 minutes.
Abusing it?
Yes, I mean, serious abuse. If you happen to call, nobody's going to judge whether that was a qualified or a serious abuse. Don't fret that.
Didn't Bethany put a motion, notify the law enforcement?
Thanks, sir.
Yes.
The only other thing I have on my report is Kyle and I have been talking about our 150-year celebrations coming up. Need to start a committee on that, appoint somebody from the board, maybe get somebody from the park board, get some citizens on it. Also, some ideas that we had, what I thought about was, there's a parade, a time capsule, 5K run, a photo of then and now, of different things of what had happened back 150 years ago today, how it looked. And then, one I thought would be really cool is a coin, a commemorative coin. On the backside, it'd be 150 years, on the front side, we'll pick up. Like a challenge coin kind of thing? Yeah, something like that, yeah.
They can start growing their beards and have the longest beard content.
Yeah, have the longest beard content.
I think we should do, the picture should be like the Chip and Jill on Henry's flagboard.
There you go. That is all of my reports. RSVP, please.
I don't have a lot for reports tonight. I've been sending out a lot of calendar invites or just event details for, we're in the time of year where a lot of the organizations we've participated in have annual dinners or annual meetings. So please, RSVP if you have not, so we can make sure to get you signed up for the ones that do require an advance notice. We also have our staff Christmas party planned out, and should have got a mailer for that. So please, RSVP as well, so we can start planning that out.
Thank you, sir. City Times report?
Nothing for open, I do have something for closed.
Okay. Please, Chief, monthly?
Excited, you should have my, our monthly report reviewed your packet. We currently have one opening, we have a job offer out to an experienced officer for that one. Don't know how that's going to go, but right now, we're still staying with one opening pretty full, and still got one in field training, she's doing well. And expecting her to be cleared on her own at the end of November, is what we're hoping. So, as far as we know, everything's okay.
Thank you, sir. Community Development Report. It's in your packet. Do they have any questions?
They officially open up north of Baptist Home?
Is Baptist Home officially open?
Yeah.
As far as we're concerned, it is. I don't know if there are hurdles with the state. Thanks, sir. Treasury Month Report, please?
My report's also in the packet. Things coming up, we'll have our six-month financial report on November 18th for review and signature. And then, the department heads, we're going to start working on the budget. For those of you that are new to the board, the department heads start working on the budget in November. They have to have their stuff turned in to myself and Kyle by January. We review that, and February, we will start having budget meetings. And we will get it done early like we did last year. So if there are any necessary changes that we need to make before that last meeting in April, we can do that.
Sounds good, thank you. Moving on, Board of Aldermen report, Alvin Lewis? Nothing to report. Alvin Turner?
The Ashland Betterment Coalition, I know Kyle kind of mentioned earlier, are having a
Pizza Party?
Pizza Party, yeah, for elected officials and department heads. So, if you haven't got that invite, do that. Should be fun.
When's that?
November 5th.
Is that one of the evenings?
Six o'clock, yeah.
At night?
Not in the morning.
Well, yay, I can get up early.
Yes, sir? Yeah, alright, thanks, sir. Alvin Ramcrapp?
No, no report.
Alvin Dunwoodie?
I have one thing. I received an email from a gentleman in our ward concerning recycling bins. And Kyle, do you want me to forward that to you, or?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. He's got two concerns, with them, overfilled bins and the other one's limited hours of operation, asking him if there's any way that we can possibly expand the operating hours. And possibly increasing the number of bins and the frequency of bin exchanges, which I know we've been through all that before.
Yeah, so I mean, we will be putting a trash service out for bid this year.
Okay.
That contract is up at the end of this fiscal year, so that'll kind of be the opportune time to really take a look at expanding that service, if the board wants to expand that service. Other than that, I mean, right now, it's not open on the weekends. I'm sure that's his largest complaint. That's also when we see the largest amount of abuse. So we've opted to close it on the weekends, just because we don't have any staff out there on a regular basis. We have a lot of shopping right there, it's kind of easy to keep track of it during the week. The bins being overfilled, we lock it when they're full to try and, you know, keep the material in it. I don't know that we've had, have we written any tickets or just warnings?
We've not really had any problems since we put the cameras on.
I was going to say, it's been pretty well maintained. Obviously, the capacity's the biggest issue. If that's something that we can address as, as part of the contract, we'll certainly bring that to the table for you guys. I know we've previously looked at it, there's a cost associated with putting more bins down there. Right now, Republic doesn't own any more of those bins, so the most that they would be able to do is try and increase the amount of collections. So right now, it gets collected three times a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday morning. We're also into that time of the year where people are loading up on cardboard, they're gift ordering off of Amazon, so.
I'll forward this to you.
For sure, we'll take a look at it.
Alvin Cooper?
Oh, just, there is a street light that is out on Redtail between 107 and 109. It's like the northeast side of the street. We could just put a ticket in for that, that'd be great.
There is a number on those, I'll take that.
Yes.
Oh, I can.
Depending on if the pole's new enough, it'll have a number, a tag on it.
107 Redtail, you said?
Between, yeah, it's right between 107 and 109. I could, I could get it for you tomorrow and email it to you.
Good work. And Alvin Bill?
Alvin, just, Alvin reminded me of this. At the corner of Liberty Lane and Regent's Avenue, there was a pole that was damaged from a storm. I think, I think they've worked on it a little bit, like they took some of the, like, shrapnel away that was there after a trampoline got wrapped around it. But I think the pole was also, like, bent over, so we could have somebody check on that one, just to see.
I think that one's been reported, yeah.
Okay.
They've been out and done something, they've done what they're probably going to do. But we can resubmit it?
I would level check to make sure what the status of it is too.
And we don't get any notification, so, since we're talking about streetlights, like, anybody can submit a streetlight outage. It's, it's an online form on Ameren's website. So there's no follow-up that we get once we click that button, unless we, you know, visually see that the light's been fixed. So, do check on it, I guess, when you drive home, let us know if it's still leaning, and we can put in another ticket in.
I have one more thing. The striping on Liberty Lane, is that on his checklist? I believe it's scheduled for next week, but I'll check on it. Yeah. With Pumpkin Fest, was it last weekend, or weekend four?
Last weekend, yeah. Couple of out-towners didn't know which way to turn, so. Well, the roads turn nationally completely different than the rest of America.
Because that turn lane's not marked too, I almost got hit the other day, because I was like, I was sitting in the current lane, and then the person going in the straight lane thought that that was the turn, so then the current lane.
Alright, we'll move on to general comments from the public. Any persons in the public comment?
It's my birthday, I'm happy to be sitting here.
Alright, then, no comments from the public. Can we get a motion to go to closed session, 27 chapters, 610-021, legal actions, and hiring and firing?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call now. Alvin Dunwoodie?
Aye.
Ramcrapp?
Aye.
Alvin Cooper?
Aye.
Alvin Turner?
Aye.
Alvin Bill?
Aye.
Alvin Lewis?
Aye.
Okay, we're back in the open session. At this time, we have nothing to report. Can I get a motion to adjourn?